Good evening. Today is August 7, 2020, and this is the start of the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to convene into executive session to return to open session around 6 o'clock, or whenever executive session business is finished. We're going to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct conductive bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel to wit fire union. 2713. Looking for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion's made. Executive roll call. Matt?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're in executive session. Today is Tuesday, August 11, 2020, and this is the start of the Board of Selectmen meeting. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being televised by Whitman-Hanson Cable Access. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all. So, thank you for being with us. We finally got back together. We haven't met since last March, and seems like forever, so I know I'm happy to be back here. And I think everybody is. We have Selectmen Hickey out here in the audience. We're all social distancing, and also Selectmen Bloss is out there. So, not sure if the camera can get them, but they are here, and you'll be able to hear them. So, that being said, Mrs. Kama, can we do the announcements, please?
Yes, I'm just taking my mask off to read. Announcements. Volunteers are needed on the following committees: Facebook upkeep committee, 200th anniversary, conservation commission, associate members, cultural council, disabilities, economic development, finance, highway building committee, historical commission, memorial day patriotic observance, memorial field trustees, North River Commission, and zoning board alternate. Applications for appointment and info on the committee are available on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov. There will be a voter registration session held on Saturday, August 22, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Town Hall. This will be the last day to register to vote for September 1 state primary. Any citizen may register to vote online or by mail-in registration. Any resident citizen who will be 18 years of age by September 1 is eligible to register to vote by August 22. The Town of Hanson will offer in-person early voting for the September 1 state primary at the Town Hall, 542 Liberty Street, and the Town Clerk's office on Saturday, August 22, and Sunday, August 23, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 noon. Then during regular working hours, Monday, August 24 through Friday, August 28. Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, August 25, and I believe we're going to go over our calendar later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to juggle a little bit. I should also say that we have Kate Federoff, our General Counsel. Kate's on the line right here. And also, we have Deb Petty, our Town Planner. So, the first thing up is going to be Selecta peer review firm for the marijuana cultivation special permit application that was submitted on August 6, 2020. So, who would...Kate, why don't you go first?
All right, you are. So, I have the in-house that I also submitted, the much anticipated special permit application And it's included in their package, including the following plans: so existing and proposed conditions, parking, loading, access areas, landscaping and lighting, utilities, stormwater cals, architectural plans, emergency response plans, solid waste disposal, water usage, recycle plans, odor control and ventilation, the last of which is the most important. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to submit this application to peer review, and the purpose of that is to say, okay, we have these, our own engineers whom we've engaged, we don't pay for them, but we engage them, to analyze the plans that, plans and calculations and engineering that were submitted by Impress LLC to ensure that it's something that's going to be consistent with the neighborhood, right? Because we want to make sure that some of the things that people were concerned about, so for example, odor escaping the building, won't be present at this facility. So, and you need a technical expert to do that, because I can't review that, the Board of Selectmen can't review that with any sense of accuracy. So, this will give us a lot of comfort to know that Impress has done all of its due diligence and done it very well, so that it's going to be a positive experience rolling out marijuana into the Town of Hanson. We, Deb reviewed the application preliminarily. She noticed that, I believe, the odor control plan hadn't yet been submitted, so we've requested them to submit that. But tonight's agenda item is really just to select the peer reviewer. It's my understanding Deb has three firms that she's identified as being possible candidates for the peer review engineers, but she hasn't yet gotten monetary quotes from them? Is that right, Deb?
That's correct.
So, to the extent we don't know how much they're going to charge, could be an issue. But, that said, because we're really not paying for it, you can identify which ones you think would be appropriate for the Town of Hanson. Perhaps Deb can talk to you about how she selected the three that she found, and what their qualifications are.
Okay. Deb, would you like to take it from there?
Yeah. So, when this came up, I put something out on the planning listserv, and I asked for other towns and who they use for review engineers. I got, I only got two replies, and one of them was Trinity Consultants in Boston, and the other reply was from a town that did their own review, and she said, because the Cannabis Control Commission always has a requirement that there be no odor, that you don't really have to worry so much about the mechanics of the HVAC system. Because one of the troubles I was having was the engineering firms that look at stormwater cals are not the engineering firms that look at mechanical cals. So, I think Trinity will do the stormwater, and they will do the mechanicals, but they won't do like a bylaw review or a site plan overview. But I feel comfortable with the fact that ZBA has to look at the site plan, and I can look at the site plan, that we, that's not the biggest issue for us. So, I'm leaning towards that Trinity, but I have no idea what the cost will be. I also sent it to environmental partners, which I work a lot with, with the planning board, for a quote. I haven't gotten a response yet. I feel, I know we can do the site plan piece of it, the bylaw piece of it, and the storm cals, I'm not so sure about the mechanical, if he has an engineer in house that can do that piece of it. And then the third engineer I haven't, is Maryland, I haven't gotten to them, and I'm concerned. My concern is that we may end up essentially needing two engineering firms. And that was sort of my confusion when I started this, like, do we want an engineering firm to look at the mechanicals and the odor control, and then a separate engineering firm? Like I said, Trinity, out of them all, I think can handle the bulk of what we need, and they have done them, and did come recommended from another planner, and I have seen their report. My thoughts on this was that perhaps the Selectmen could vote to allow John to pick the peer review firm once we have quotes and a little more information.
I mean, I'm fine with that, but I would push, I don't want us doing anything in-house. They are on the hook to pay for this. I want to make sure it is thoroughly peer reviewed, and I think we need to push for, if we need to get two engineering firms, one to look at mechanical, and one to look at site and the rest of the stuff, then I think that's what we do, and we circle back and talk to them about it. Honestly, like, if it was our dime, I probably would say, oh, let's try to be more judicious. But, I mean, as far as the mechanical, that's the biggest thing that we heard from people that came to this, you know, to our hearing, and that keeps coming up over and over again. So, I definitely don't want to give that short shrift. We've got to have somebody look at that to...
We still have to select the engineer, though.
Well, she's saying, can we just have, can we just tell John, like, John, we want to have a mechanical engineer, and we want somebody to, if you have to separate the duties, then go ahead and separate it, but look at everything. That's what she's looking for.
You can definitely just authorize John to select the appropriate engineer per end at, you know, however many you need, based on the proposals as they do come in, and you don't need to limit yourself to one engineer. If you feel like one is very competent in a certain area, and then another group is more competent in another area, that's fine. You just don't want duplication across the same area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean...
John, does that sound good?
Yes, I can do that.
And I appreciate you pointing out, Deb, that all firms aren't going to have all that expertise necessarily within, because that's important, and yet each one of those components are important on their own, so...
Originally, I don't know, I do stormwater calculations, which are very important.
Yeah.
That, to me, is very important, too, just as important as the mechanical, and they are totally different.
Yeah.
Not even close. So, that's what I'm like, oh.
So, do we need a motion?
Does anyone else have any questions for Deb or Kate on this? No? Yeah, so we're looking for a motion to allow John to select the engineering firm, well, could be firms, you know? So, basically, if you're comfortable with that one person, they can do both sides, fine. If you're not comfortable, then we're going to hire two firms. Well, we're not going to hire them, but we're going to pick them at the expense to express.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
All that's going in the motion, what you just said?
That's up to Gria.
We, I think, I think these...
I use Kate's motion, which is, yeah.
Okay. I was going to say, I think these professionals will figure it out.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Okay, 5-0. Okay. Thank you. Deb, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Deb. Good to see you.
Kate, hang on there.
Hi.
Okay, so, next up, old business. So, we got discuss, can't discuss Cranberry Cove staffing shortages, but really, that's only one piece of the puzzle. The other piece is opening without lifeguards. So, I don't know if all you guys know, but the, well, first of all, the water has been tested. The water was tested last week, it was tested again yesterday, so the water is good, in case somebody asks any questions. But, so Kate, so they want, well, actually, we have Billy Boyle here, the director. You want to, you want to speak on that?
So, the, I guess, the synopsis of our August 3 meeting, so trying to get our staffing and everything together. We don't have the adequate staff to run the beach the way it would need to be. And my understanding is that Diane was still looking at a way of how we could still accomplish it, was able to talk to Kate, and so the board, or rather, the commission did motion and vote to try and open the cove without guards, you know, pending appropriate signage, swim at your own risk. And I guess the biggest piece to that is, so long as we don't charge people a fee, then there's, very limited to no liability if something happens. It's only when, you know, we were to charge people a fee, and then we don't have guards, that creates an issue. So, she had submitted, it looks like from Mass. General Law, it's chapter 21, subsection 17(c), that goes into all the details of that. But I guess the commission is in favor of doing that, and I guess just needs the, you know, the blessing from the board, and I guess obviously further input from Kate, just to make sure, you know, that if we do this, it's just done correctly, and especially with the signage. I guess that's the key piece, which is that we have to have at least...
The proper signage.
The proper signage, you know, the right verbiage, and just, again, so people clearly see, no lifeguards, no duties, swim at your own risk. It, I'm sure there's other probably key things that we have to add to that, but...
All right, so we'll get Kate, your opinion on that.
So, Diane stopped me as I was heading out of town meeting, so in a weakened state. No, she caught my ear, and she was asking about the cove, and, you know, really, what could we do in terms of opening it and protecting us of liability? And, you know, we talked for a while, and I said, there is one thing, it's called, and I think Billy cited it, couldn't hear him quite so well, but it's called the recreational use statute. And essentially, what it says is that property owners, including municipalities, are protected from liability if people are using their land for free, so in a park, or here in the cove, that kind of thing. So, as a matter of fact, I actually successfully defended a lawsuit where someone tripped on the walkway, it wasn't the sidewalk, but the walkway at a library, and I said, it's recreational use statute, and the court agreed. The trick is, in order to have that statute applied to you, you can't charge for anything. So, I don't know how you do it down at Camp Quaney, but you can't charge for parking lanes, you can't charge an admittance fee, you can't charge to use the bathroom, you can't charge for anything. So, for example, I'll give you a reason why I'm emphasizing that, is in my library case, what the plaintiff had argued was, well, they charge late fees if you, you know, don't return your book, so that's a charge. So, someone could try to use against you. But it really is a true shield. There's a ton of case law on it, and courts are generally very, very open to giving this shield to municipalities. They don't want to weaken it, because the idea is, otherwise, no one would open their property up for use by the public, and that's a nice thing, to have the public be able to utilize these open spaces. So, and on another note, so since you have lifeguards, forget about the fact that now you can't find them, I get that piece, you're going back to college, and the kids are having to quarantine before they go to college, so you have that piece of filling it. But you don't have the employment liability that someone could claim, okay, well, they weren't properly enforcing social distancing, and as a consequence, I lifeguard got sick, and something drastic happened, right? So, you protect yourself from liability in that context as well, even though that would have been limited regardless, but it's an option. Then the question is really one of policy. Do I want to open it up to the public, knowing that I'm not going to be there enforcing the social distancing rules? But maybe that's, the answer to that is yes, to expect people to behave, and to follow the rules, and to act like adults. Maybe the answer is no, because you're overly, you know, you're very concerned that it's not physically possible down there. So, now it's really a policy question of what you guys want to do.
Okay. Questions? Let's start with Matt.
I have a quick question. How about... Down there, not charging anything, but just down there, making sure the garbage being picked up, and making sure that the beach is... At the beach.
So, no, it doesn't, and I had that concern that, that, okay, none of those things I had thought about, I'll tell you about all of them. I thought, well, is there something... I was a little new to them, where you, sometimes if you make measures, for example, randomly say, well, were those measures once taken, just, right? So, it, so this leads to your question, first, by putting a gate attendant there? Are it happening safely? And I looked, and there's no piercing of the recreational statute, recreational use statute shield by that. The only piercing of the shield is if you charge. So, yeah, you could have a gate attendant there who makes sure that it's looking nice, and that people don't throw their, you know, broken objects or whatever on the ground, or toilet paper in the toilet. You can do that. Or you could just leave it completely unattended, bathroom blocked, gates open.
I mean, that's perfect. I like that idea, so, yeah.
Ms. Hickey? No questions? Mr. Bloss?
I have no questions. I'm just going to state publicly, I think there's no greater... At school, there will be no social distancing on those docks. It's impossible. It's not, it doesn't matter what people want to do. And last night, I was down in Green Harbor watching the kids jumping off, jumping off 6 inches between kids. I think right now, our responsibility is to get our kids back into school in the fall, and let it go. That's not an issue at this point. School is the issue.
All right, let's put it to a vote. What's your first, right? So, the motion is, do we allow Camp Quaney or the Cranberry Cove to open without lifeguards?
And I agree to, I agree that we have to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that we're enabling the students to back to school. And Hanson, on the Governor's tribe, he said, we're looking good, and we don't want to jeopardize that, right? But at the same time, too, we have opened up so much in this town. We have opened up the parks and fields...
Baseball.
Baseball. And you go down, and you see these fields, and no one, you know, there are some people that are conscious about it, absolutely, but the kids are standing right next to each other, kids are in the dugouts, you know? There was just an event up at the high school for basketball, and I saw no masks on those kids, and they're all in a group photo. And it's, are we going to close down all the parks and fields? And I think at this point, too, the next agenda item that we have to put on for the next meeting is Triple E, because Triple E has been found in Hanson, so wear your bug spray. But I think we need to look at this as a uniform approach. Are we going to allow recreation in the Town of Hanson? Or are we just going to, you know, mitigate the risk to the point, to the best that we can? And I think that that's one question that I would like to, you know, raise.
I 100% agree. I don't think it's fair to pick and choose and say, you can't swim, but oh, boy, if you're playing softball and baseball, this is your year, you're the boys of summer, go out there, knock yourselves out. Doesn't seem fair, and it doesn't seem consistent, and honestly, we're, and I hear what Mr. Bloss is saying, and I really do take it to heart. I think that we're at a place where people need to be responsible for their actions and their children's actions, and they need to monitor them, and do whatever is best for them, society, and their little family, and decide what's best. I don't want to be into trying to decide whether kids should be going down to swim or not, but I want to make sure Mr. Armando continues to test the water, and that we're providing as much as we can a safe, you know...
Yeah, every week they do that automatically.
Yeah, every five, he said every five days it's good for, and he's tested it, and it's good. And I think this Recreation Commission has put a great deal of time and effort, and I mean, honest to God, they've been like, energized, everybody. They have not stopped. They have, one hurdle after another, they have kept coming back and tried to come up with something. And I would like to try to help them get this one modest thing done during the summer. So, that's where I stand on it.
So, I'm looking for a motion.
And I'm sure everybody can hear me, I'm close enough to the microphone. With baseball and softball, it's literally...
Have you gone by there? It's...
I guess I'll, after, because the way it was brought to us by Little League, they weren't going to be using the dugouts at all. And the parents and the team, the players, would be socially distanced while the games are going on. If that's not the case, I'll have to go look for them.
Well, it did change a little from when it, because initially, they couldn't have any games at all.
The barbering phase changed.
So, when that second phase came, the guidelines loosened up a little bit regarding baseball and softball, where now they can actually have games.
I mean, I guess my question would be, the ability that, you know, you're down there every day, do you go to the cove at all, are there people using it?
There are people that are certainly not reading the signs and still swimming at their own risk anyway. Some of them are maintaining certain distances, and others are pretty carefree.
Right. And I do agree with Mr. Bloss that right now, the most important thing is school. Well, we're talking about two separate things.
Right.
To me, with that, a high school graduation was lost because of a couple seniors, and a couple kids on the beach will make sure that my niece does not go back to school this fall, and that really concerns me.
And that's why I have to keep it the way it is.
I would say that the baseball, if you go, and this is not an indictment on baseball, I'm not saying whether they're following the rules or not, but I will say, I have driven by on a number of nights, and that entire parking lot is packed with overflow there, and I'm seeing groups of people. Now, I am not going with a magnifying glass to see if people wearing masks or not.
But if what you're saying is true...
It is true.
Then you're making my point. You're going to open the gates, and now more people are going to have more opportunities to get together, and as Wes said, you know, it's not 6 feet, never mind 6 inches on those docks.
Then I'm saying, should we be consistent? And I'm also worried...
Right. Do you want to penalize the camp because of the other...
Wait a minute, to be consistent, if we made a mistake by allowing baseball and softball to play, because they're not following the rules according to the wire?
I didn't say, I was careful not to say they weren't following the rules. Yeah.
Okay. If they're not doing it the way they instructed, or told us that they were going to do it, we know what's going to happen at the cove, if we open it. There'll be no social distancing at all. They'll be in the water, on the docks, standing next to each other, and if that's the case with baseball and softball, then we made a mistake. We made a mistake. Why me, too? That's all I'm saying on that. It's not about being consistent, it's about repeating a mistake. If, if we...
I do agree with one thing that Laura said, that, you know what, as parents, you need to be accountable, you know? My wife never sent my kids down at 7 years old, down on their own, down to the camp. It just didn't happen. So, you know, the accountability's got to start at home, you know? They pushed school off our A to the middle of September. You know, everybody brings up good points, but, you know, we, I want to move to the vote, because this discussion's been a hot discussion regarding the camp over the, you know, past couple months. We all have different opinions, good ones, and that's why this is such a great board. And so, unless somebody else has something else to add, I'm looking for a motion to, go ahead.
Just, within the motion, does it need to include, like, opening and closing? Should it go to that, the hours that it's going to be open, and then what signage is required, or is it just...
You guys can set the hours.
Okay.
Yeah. The only other thing that we have, which we'll address after, is extending the time for the camp, which we'll do that next. So, again, so I'm looking for a motion to allow Cranberry Cove to open up without any lifeguards with the proper signage.
And, yeah, and within, within the Governor's...
Yes, in compliance with the Governor's orders.
Yep.
Second.
Compliance with the Governor's orders. All right? So, the motion's made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those not? Okay, so, 3-2, Gria.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. All right, so, next, we're going to do, why don't we go up to, let's talk about extending the FY '21, FY '22 camping season at Camp Quaney from May 9, 2021, to October 31, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions?
No, and again, implied, but consistent with the Governor's orders. To the extent we roll back on, you know, on opening, then, you know, the camp, and to the extent the Governor rolls things back, then obviously, this would be also rolled back.
Anything else? All those in favor? Okay, 5-0. All right, Billy, you have one more thing on here.
Donations.
Donations. I'm jumping around. Okay, item 6. Okay, so, accept donations to the Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Gratefully.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? 5-0. All right.
Wedding refund.
Oh, yes, the wedding refund. That was the other thing I was thinking of. Okay, so, under new business, refund a wedding schedule at Camp Kauani on August 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Billy, you know about that, right? Just to refund, obviously, because of what's going on.
Well, it's a different situation. It's unrelated to COVID, but it goes back to a wedding that was extended. They were.
You don't have to get into it. I just want to know if the commission voted to refund.
They were, yeah, they wanted to get the final approval.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, 5-0. All right, Billy, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
You, too. I gotta say, it's very nice doing the pledge not in front of a computer this time around, so. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so now we can hop back up. Okay, under new business, so consider having two selectmen interview the deregulation, deregulation applicants and make recommendations to the board. So, we currently have 11 people.
Wow.
So, in Greer and I's discussions last week on this, trying to figure out a way to have 11 people come in here. But I think it's important to all of us that. Effective applicants. So, maybe having two selectmen. Now, Mr. Hickey's on the, he's on the feasibility study, but probably shouldn't be one of the ones that makes a selection, because you've got to work with them, right?
Well, yeah, that, that I shouldn't be making, or should be?
I was on the impression you didn't want to make the selections, because you're going to be working with them.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
I would rather have two other members.
Yeah, so, so just because of time and social distance, I think that two selectmen should get the applicants, maybe come in. And it doesn't have to be long interviews. It could be, you know, five or 10 minutes, you know, split it up on two nights, maybe four on one night, five on another night, and have the people, the applicants, come in and tell us why they want to be on here and interview all 11.
And when are you hoping to have those decisions? By the 25th, the next time we meet?
Oh, yeah, I would, yeah, absolutely.
And so.
Because I don't know any other way to do it.
So, those two people would make the recommendations to the larger board, who then would vote officially?
Correct, on the 25th.
I mean, if nobody else, I'll take one for the team. I don't mind helping out at all. I don't know, you know, but if somebody else feels strongly they want to do it, I would.
And it's the same as anybody, anybody else? Matt or Wes?
I would do it.
We would do it? Okay. I mean, does that sound good? And what do you think for interview? Like I said, it's, it's something.
Honestly, Wes, if you're up for it, I'd love to just be like, let's set aside like two hours and just have people.
Yeah.
Because then we can compare apples to oranges right away, you know what I mean?
But what you can do is if you start at, let's say, 5 o'clock, you know, every 10 minutes, Greer can have the people, have them, you know, wait outside, and then you go out and grab them. And I think in an hour and a half, you can do.
I would just ask the same questions to every applicant. We've been through this a few times, Wes.
I was gonna say, Greer, then we do it next Tuesday night when Greer is on.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, Greer, you would just have to reach out to the applicants and just let them know and stagger the time just a little bit.
And I'll ask them to wait outside.
Have them wait outside, right here, and then as they're done, one walks out. They can ask the next, they're not contestants. I don't know why I want to call them contestants. It's not a game show. Applicants, thank you. Come in. So, does that sound, and we don't need a vote, just a consensus of the board, because I don't know how we can do it, you know, having, because you can't have people come in.
Guys, just be careful, because what you're doing is creating a subcommittee and a screening committee. So, just post it and create minutes.
Okay, so post a meeting. Kate, you scared me. I almost forgot about you, Kate.
So, even though it's two of us.
You caught me on the phone. I shouldn't have been on the phone.
I should, yeah, I should have hung up on you 10 minutes ago.
All right, so, even though it's just two of us, and it's not a quorum, it's still a subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you suggest that we post for a meeting for Tuesday?
Yep.
And still take minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Greer, is that, because that's basically puts the yeoman's share on you for Tuesday night. You're going to be running around, taking minutes.
Um, go ahead, Matt.
Kate, could we call it a working group?
Um, well, you're making a recommendation to the board, so it would be a little bit of a stretch there.
Okay.
You know, to be quite honest with you.
You're worried about transparency.
I have no problem.
Call a committee.
Yep.
I thought it worked. Calling it a committee.
No, but.
No, the reviews of the applicants.
She's saying the selection of the, but I, Michael.
She's saying we should post a meeting.
You know what?
And do minutes.
I'm fine. And I'd even be fine with Carol recording it, because you know what? People are going to take pot shots and say, "We didn't, you know, pick this one. We should have picked that." So, I'm like, just bring it on. Bring sunshine and fresh air.
All right, good. So, that's what, that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
Boy, I'm glad, I'm glad I kept you on, Kate.
My goodness. And I don't know if you need me for anyone.
No, I think we, John, I think we're good with Kate. That's it. Kate, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem. The only thing I forgot to do during the marijuana cultivation discussion, you guys, is we've got to set the application fee. So, could you vote on an application fee for $1,500?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? 5-0, Greer. $1,500 in the application fee. Anything else, Kate?
Yes, I'm hopping off. Thanks so much, you guys.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.
You, too.
Okay, bye-bye.
So, Mr. Hickey was wondering, John, have we heard whether we've got a FinCom member yet for that deregulation committee?
Kevin Sullivan's going to do it.
Oh, okay. All right, good.
Okay, good. So, that was easy. Okay, next up on the new business, execute a state primary warrant. So, that, this is just something we have to sign.
We have to open October's special town meeting.
Oh, I apologize. Our motion to open up October's special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? 5-0. I was grouped in there. I almost missed that. Thank you. So, John, the state primary warrant, Dot, you want to get us to sign it at the end, or?
You just sign.
We all need to sign it, or just I sign it?
You usually all sign it.
Okay.
And you say, and you date it.
That's all we have to do with it, right? You don't need any motions or anything?
No, no, just sign the, sign the document.
And so, you can, Matt, you can pass that down if you're, so, set the polling dates for the state primary, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. What is the date, though?
September 20th.
Or September 1st, isn't it?
September 1st.
Okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to set the state primary from the time 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on September 1st.
So moved. Second.
But do we honestly even have a choice about that, quite honestly? I mean, isn't that like the state's date? I mean, what, would Hanson, like, decide to do it the 8th or something? I mean, like.
I just, I looked at it earlier. I'm like, I don't know the date.
Okay, I'm just curious, but.
All those in favor? Okay, 5-0. Okay, so, item number three, thank you. Item number three, under new business, is vote to accept the CARES Act reimbursement money. So, the program with the CARES Act that's reimbursing us the money says that the Board of Selectmen have to vote to accept the money. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, they, they sent back, our first submission, they sent back some questions, the county did. And one of the questions was that they did not have a proof of vote or authorization in order to accept the CARES funds on behalf of the community. So, you just needed a formal authorization.
And this isn't a once and done. Like, we might accrue additional things, right, up until the end of September? Didn't they extend it? Okay.
So, the, the motion that I came up with says that we, to accept any money that the county does give us on that.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
And then for those who haven't been following our tab, John, could you tell us how much we'll be receiving in aid?
We have the, our, the amount that we have is over $900,000 that we could get. As we're getting it, we're putting it in, but we're still balling down with this question. Just wanted to see, it's good that they came back with some of the questions that they had. So, now that we know what they're looking for, and now, John, I can work on getting some more reimbursements in.
John, one, I was talking to a couple of selectmen from surrounding towns, and they told me that to the extent that their folks at Town Hall did not have laptops to work from home, that they purchased them under this CARES Act and got reimbursed. So, I just thought I'd put that bee in you bone it. Okay? Just think about that. Okay.
My computer has just crashed, and I am waiting for the next one, so.
Your iPad?
No.
Oh.
My Dell that I work on. So, it's like, Mr. Mitchell, you time tonight.
All right, I move that.
It's sitting in my kitchen.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that the board formally accepts any Corona aid, relief, and economic security CARES Act-related funds distributed by the Plymouth County to the town of Hanson.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
No, I do thank John and Greer for all the hard work and all the department heads for getting these, this info in there, because we need to get our share of the money. Yep.
All those in favor? Okay, 5-0. Okay, next, item four on the new business, right of first refusal to purchase 209 Main Street, Unit 52. So, I'm looking, this, this complex comes up a lot. So, I'm looking for a motion not to exercise the right of refusal for 209 Main Street, Unit 52. Motion's made. Do I have a second?
Second, and I have a question.
Sure, discussion, go ahead.
Um, or discussion. For this unit, did Tom Tebow from the Housing Authority make a recommendation on not to purchase? Or is this not for affordable housing, sorry?
No, this is not.
Okay, then never mind.
No, 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 you are right.
Okay.
They have to be, the Housing Authority has to be presented this particular property. Historically, they have not exercised their right. They would need to make the recommendation to us that as the Housing Authority, they would want to purchase this.
Okay.
But is that affordable housing? No, I don't think Dunham Farms is affordable housing.
It's not really called affordable, but it is, it is, yeah, that's why we have the right of our refusal, because it's purchased at a reduced.
Yeah, we've done a lot of them.
Yes, we, because Dunham Farms had a whole rash of them. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
All those in favor?
I'm recusing myself. I'm just saying that, Greer, because you're way back there, and I didn't think you'd, okay?
401, Greer. Okay, next up, to approve the July donations. Did you guys look through those? I can pull them up. Item.
Did you skip over calendar? Selectmen's calendar, sorry?
Selectmen's calendar.
Yes, I did. Approve the revised FY '21 Selectmen's calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So, I think the only changes on there was Chief Thompson and also Todd Hassett. At the calendar, I think they just kind of duplicated what we already had. Just rolled with it, I believe.
Can we put something in here about goals for next year? Because we lost our way, for good reason. I mean, you know, we had COVID come along and kind of threw everything in, in, you know, disarray, but.
And we can adjust at any time. If you guys have something, it's not, that's not set in stone.
The idea, what I like about this is it sort of keeps us honest. If we've got, like, dates, then we can just, oh, okay, we're supposed to be doing that this week.
Okay, so motion, any more questions? All those in favor? 5-0. Okay, now, we're going to look to approve the July donations. Seven. If someone finds it before me, you can read them.
Question?
Perfect. Hey, Dorothea Perry, $130 police department gift.
Second.
All those in favor? 5-0.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the thank you letter's going out to all the donations that we have.
That's a good question. Do you know?
We have not been doing that, because some of the donations were for the 200th anniversary. And I don't have necessarily all that information. I could probably get it from the treasurer collector.
Yeah, well, I mean, with the 200th anniversary, I think those were like a different thing, because they were making a donation for a sweatshirt or whatever.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I don't, yeah.
That I would, I wouldn't mind passing over.
Are the thank you to go out from the department, was it the officiator?
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that, too.
Sorry, I don't mean to give you one more.
So, not necessarily you.
No, I just make sure that the departments are sending thank yous out for the Council on Aging.
Right. And it could be a simple email to the person, too.
They may be doing it anyway. This is just really formally asked, but I, I would, you know.
Just good manners.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Okay, request, request to use the middle school parking lot for hazardous waste collection day on 9/12.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? 5-0. Claire had reached out to me from, where's, Claire runs the.
Original.
Matt knows.
Uh, she, be, uh.
Nice woman.
Yeah, really nice woman.
She called me when I was in New Hampshire. Yes, yes. Yeah, the co-op. And they needed a bigger, because at first, I suggested McQuan, and I said after, you know what, I'll just be quiet. She's like, well, we need a big place to put man in other times. I said, all right, that's fine. Okay, so, next up, appointments. Appoint, appoint Kurt McLean as interim highway director.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? 5-0. Okay, old business, Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Audit. So, John is going to give us an update exactly where we are regarding the audit, if you guys remember. And I know it's been some time. We did, we had voted back, I can't even remember. I want to say back in January, February, to, to do an audit for the regional school, along with Whitman, and split it. And John had put out the bid and take it from there.
So, I, we had, it was February, I put out a formal ad in the paper, posted it at Town Hall. I did the invitation for bid process on it. Posted it on CommBuys, the state procurement website. Also sent it out to vendors that I knew that did the work. We received one bidder back on the Friday before we shut Town Hall down on that Monday. So, we received one bidder back, and then COVID hit. So, I haven't done anything since then. Have been put it on the back burner. So, and we have several things you could, we could do. We could either contact that one bidder, see if it's still, still on. We could rebid again. We could do something else that I'm not thinking of. So, it's, it's been put on the back burner until now because of.
I think whatever's simplest for you, just if you can just contact them and see if they're still able to do it.
Well, one of the, that's, I agree. One of the things that John said to me is that he thought that the bid that came in was more than reasonable. So, he expected it to be a lot more.
Yeah.
So, I said, why not go to them and see? They may say, you know what, hey, it's been six months. You got to redo it. Our numbers have gone up.
They also may be like, thank you.
But why not go with them? If he was expecting a lot more and that come in at a decent price?
Yeah.
That's what I think.
I mean, so can you check with Frank and just, I think they passed something at their last town meeting to actually fund it. They were going to do it anyway, but they actually formally voted to fund it, so.
Okay. I can check with Frank, I hope.
Um, let's see, good, Matt.
No, Laura, cover the point about Whitman.
Okay. So, yeah, I would, you know, because what if we put it out to bid and it comes back $10,000 more, you know?
Now, just to be clear, this is not looking at this whole statutory assessment thing with the, okay. This is, this is a, this is a, oh, my, my mind just, it's a forensic audit of things that we had discussed, and you put, included some in the RFP, but I don't think you said it was exclusively those things, that, you know, that was something you'd work with both boards. You and Frank would work with the boards to outline what types of forensic data we were looking for. Yeah, that would be good, because I think, you know, that is something that's come up, you know, so it would be good to kind of.
There's a few things that we kind of got lost because of the COVID, so.
Rightfully so.
That was one of them that we'll just have to look back into. And then, John, you can update us when you get more information on that. Does anybody else have any more comment on that? All right. So, that's old business. So, next up, we have the town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the last, the expiration of my ability to sign warrants for the board, because now the board can come in and sign it on their own, which is fantastic. So, but since the last meeting, I've, I have signed the following warrants on behalf of the board of selectmen. Okay, I'll try to read quickly here. Dated 7/23/20, warrant number four, for $9,379.78. That's a vendor warrant. Another warrant dated 7/23/20, warrant four PR, for $139,058.80. That was a payroll warrant. A warrant dated July 23rd, 2020, warrant four WH, for $26,487.80. July 23, 2020, warrant four WH, for $26,487.82, and that was a payroll withholding warrant. A warrant dated July 30, 2020, warrant five, for $277,794.41, and that was a vendor warrant, and the main expenditure on that warrant was the $204,000 around August health insurance payment for the town. The, another warrant dated July 30, 2020, warrant five PR, for $143,359.80. That was a payroll warrant. A warrant dated July 30, 2020, warrant five WH, for $28,945.05. That was a payroll withholding warrant. A warrant dated 8/6/2020, warrant six, for $462,849.43, and that was a vendor warrant. That was, the main ones on that warrant were $283.9000 for South Shore VoC's first quarter assessment, and then $150,000 for debt interest related to town and water debt. Another warrant dated April 6, 2020, warrant six PR, for $144,347.73. That was a payroll warrant, and then finally, another warrant. Just moving on to some new business, so the, the fourth quarter FY '20 article list. The Town Administrator Act requires me to, to implement selectmen-controlled town meeting articles and provide written progress reports quarterly to the board on the status of implementation of all prior town meeting votes. I have provided you a list of all the outstanding articles as of June 30, 2020. So I have complied with the requirements under the Act. There were 86 active articles in fiscal year 20 with a total outstanding amount of $1,522,747.30. Thirty-one of the 86 articles were completed in fiscal year 20, so God bless you. So 55 outstanding articles will be going on into fiscal year 21. I said that back in April, and I haven't been able to add the capital projects to the list, but I will, and I'll also add a progress report on each capital project and article. There's more information that I could come up with, but I'd like to kind of hold that for town accountant Todd Hassett. He'll be coming in on the August 25 meeting. We'll both be here. We can answer any questions that anyone might have on that. So if you could just hold your questions on that one, but I did comply with the Act. Also, the, the special act requires me to render a monthly. Each month. Again, please hold your questions for Todd. He's got to be in on the 25th, but I have complied with that section of the Act. And finally, on the special act, the town administrat, town administrator special act requires me to give the board an update on all outstanding legal matters, and I have given my update to you via, via letter tonight, but it's not a public document, because again, it may contain personnel, union bargaining, or health-related issues that cannot be discussed in public session. But again, I have complied with the requirements under the Act. Moving on to some other things that have happened since the last meeting, the state has announced its fiscal year 21 Chapter 70, which is your education funding, and unrestricted general government aid, they call it UGA.
UGA?
UGA, yes. So the, they have announced their Chapter 70 and UGA amounts, our amounts were $14,658 for Chapter 70, and we had budgeted in the budget passed at town meeting, $14,955. So we're under $297 on that. And the unrestricted general government aid or UGA of the, the amount that the state has agreed to give us is $1,359,810, and we had 100, 1.183110 in there in the budget. So that's an increase of $176,700. Again, there are other, other amounts on the, on the state aid or the cherry sheet, so they have not been released, so we don't know which, you know, where that will go, but the, these are the, the two main accounts that towns get. If that chapter, if that unrestricted general government aid or UGA amount sticks, that we will have more money, but we'll see how it goes. A lot of times, the Commonwealth giveth and the Commonwealth taketh away. It's like a, like a circuit breaker, or again, something like that, some other amount, but it does look good. We've got more money than thought as of right now. The Department of Conservation and Recreation announced $4 million in mass trails grants. Hanson is on the list for the Bay Circuit Trail relocation.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Dyer and Mr. Clemmons for all their hard work on that. Good work, guys.
Fantastic job.
How much money is it?
$100,000.
Bring it on the bacon.
And we're one of the top receivers of the recipient.
Really?
That was some bright and lovely news in the middle of an otherwise dismal kind of year, so that was great.
Everyone knows what it is. I was going to read what it is, but. We'll read that. So, on August 24, Liberty Street and County Road intersection construction will begin. Please call the Hanson Highway Department at 781-293-2822 for more information, and that money's going to be, that work is going to be paid out of the state's Complete Streets program. Road paving will be finished in the next few weeks on Route 14 on County Road and West Washington Street, so please slow down while in the work zone to enhance safety for you and for the town's employees and contractors. And I'd like to thank everybody for their patience while this needed work is completed, and this work is being paid from the Chapter 90 allotment that the town receives every year from the state.
John, what is the date that they're going to be doing the, the final service?
I don't have a final.
You don't have a final, okay.
They're, it's going to be in the next few weeks. They're going to give us a notice as soon as they're ready to go. So I'm not sure exactly when, but it's coming up very soon. And the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, Mosquito Control Board, and the Mass Department of Health are conducting aerial spraying of areas in Plymouth County and Bristol County. It started last night. It'll continue over the next few, few evenings. Twelve communities in southeastern Mass have been found to be at moderate to critical risk for eastern equine encephalitis or triple E. So more information can be found on the town's website, which is www.hanson-ma.gov, and look for the red banner that says aerial spraying for mosquitoes. And finally, the next meeting will be August 25, and I said earlier, the town accountant and the fire chief are scheduled to come in for updates.
So real, okay, I just wanted to say, because I don't want to forget. On the mosquitoes, so the level in Hanson is now moderate. It's not at a high level. It's at a moderate. Once it goes to high, the, the fields are automatically going to get shut down, and it's not going to be a vote by this board. It's going to be from the Board of Health. All right, so if that's tomorrow, if that's in two weeks, whenever that happens, we're not going to. And our announcements and stuff, but it's going to, this board is not going to talk about mosquitoes. It's coming from the Board of Health. I've already been in contact. Mr. Mono's been sending me all the stuff on it, you know, regarding the planes, and, I mean, last week I got the thing from the state on Thursday, and they're already spraying on last night, which, that's pretty impressive, so, because Matt had brought that up, too. So we're going to immediately react, you know, if that comes in.
Just to be clear, because last year we ended up having to take action. The Board of Health isn't going to have to meet to take action to close the fields. It's just going to happen automatic.
He absolutely does not have to meet to take action.
Okay, great.
We've already confirmed that. Right now, again, it's at a moderate level. So once it gets to a high, Halifax is at a high. So Halifax has closed all their fields from dusk to dawn. I told, I told John, dawn to dusk, and he goes, that's a long time. But he was shocked. He picked up on that. So just to let you know about mosquitoes.
And, John, we got, I think I, I got, and I'm sure you guys did, too, the alert on the water restrictions. And I'm, so there's a link on our town website that tells you how to sign up for those alerts, and I think it's, the link is broken. So we may want to check, but I was also wondering, do we have the water restrictions? Or at least has water updated their website?
I know it was up, up at the top. It may have been bumped down.
Okay.
And I can find it and get it back to the top.
Because a lot of people were saying, how do I find out about the mosquito spraying? How do I find out about the water? I'm like, you've got to sign up for the alerts, but it's, people didn't know. Also, I wanted to commend you. Since you've both been employed, I thought you did a phenomenal job, particularly in light of all of the hoops that you had to jump through to get that pulled off. So I just wanted to thank you on that.
Yep.
And I was wondering, do we have any update on the tree grinding up at Camp Kewahnee?
I do not have an update.
Okay. Can we just, you know, I know it doesn't fall to the very tippity-top of the list of things, but like somewhere in that rubble?
Stump grinding, John.
Somewhere in the rubble of priorities?
I would think that the, the, kind of, I can probably get the cost of what will cost in order to get rid of them, pull them, or grind them, or whatever we have to do, and I would think that would be on the, on the fall.
Yeah. I mean, I know, I know there was some discussion about water maybe having some of the equipment that Highway might be able to use, but I, I, that was just kind of an urban legend. I really don't know. All right, thanks.
Okay, approve the minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes for April 28, June 9, 2020 meeting minutes.
Some of.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you very much. There was a lot of detail in those minutes, so.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, so it is a lot of work, so thank you.
Hopefully Greer appreciates that we're back here.
Absolutely.
All those in favor? Mr. Hickey, five oh. Okay, I am now looking for a motion to adjourn.
Some of. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor? Five oh. Good night. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you on the 25th.